Hello, I'm Samantha Smiley and I'm the State Education Reporter at Chalk Beach, Chicago. Welcome to our inaugural School Board Candidate Forums. These are conversations with people running Chicago's historic first school board elections. And welcome to anyone tuning in at our YouTube channel. If you have any questions for the candidates, please type them into the comments and we would do our best to get to them. Now, we're very happy to welcome the candidates of District 6. So, we're going to start with Jessica Biggs, who comes from a family of educators with parents who are, who were educators in a school district in the Chicago suburbs and a brother who's a special education teacher. She served as a principal at Burke Elementary School, which is a school on the South Side, for six years. She is currently working at South Side Organizing Project, known as SHOOP. Next is Andre Smith, who was a finance manager and has an organization called Chicago Against Violence to end gun violence in the city. He has run for several offices before, including the 20th Ward Alderman, the Illinois House of Representatives in the 5th District, and Cook County Board of Commissioners in the 2nd District. Then we have Anusha Tatagore, who is the Director at Citizen Action/Illinois, a progressive policy organization that advocates for local, state, and federal policy. In previous years, she was a middle school math teacher at a bilingual public school in San Jose, California through Teach for America. And last but not least, we have Daniel Wallace, who is, I believe, the only writing candidate for this race. She is the founder and executive director for Kingdom Avenue, Inc., a nonprofit organization that puts on events and programs for young people in Inglewood. She has worked in Chicago Public Schools as a clerk, a school security officer, and third grade teacher at a charter school. Now, welcome everyone, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm like, is it our time to talk? Yeah, yeah, definitely. Sorry about that. So, first question for today is, what was your favorite and least favorite subject in school? You can start.
I'm happy to start. I actually think by the time I got to high school, my favorite subject was math. I really liked being able to think through a problem and a process and figure out a solution, whether that be on my own or in a group. And I would probably say that my least favorite subject in high school was gym, the whole, like, having to change, and it just was a very cumbersome process that I didn't necessarily enjoy.
What about you, Andre?
Well, I would say shop, because as I think I was able to use my hands and my mind to carve out the numbers, you know, and create things that I never created before. So, I think that was my least, I mean, my favorite. And that's a thing that we don't have now. My least favorite was gym, even though I'm a man, I'm not a sports guy, but I'm a Bears fan. So, you know, I hope I get points for that.
Yeah. What about you, Anusha?
My favorite was social studies, whether it was like history or psychology. I loved hearing about things that had gone in the past and how they affect our community today and the connection between those issues. And I feel like there's a lot of lessons learned from history class that still apply, you know, in today's world. And then my least favorite was also gym. I did not like changing because it felt like it took 10 minutes up right there. And then especially when we had swimming, like, I've always had long hair, and then having it dry was just too much.
What about you, Danielle?
My favorite subject in high school was vocal music. Shout out to Ms. Sashnik, if she can hear me. I was a vocal music major. We had majors in high school. And so, I was in there for three periods a day, and my, like, last performance, if you will, was Ave Maria, which I was super nervous about. And I crushed it. And my least favorite was biology, because I was very new to, like, reading the Bible. And I argue with my biology teacher literally every day, like, "God created all of this. I don't know what you're talking about." And so, it was like where I got in trouble. And so, yeah, that was my least favorite.
I thought you was going to say because you had to cut open animals. That's what we did.
No. I was like, "These books are wrong." And thank God for growth and grace.
Okay. Well, moving along to our next question, these are going to be a kind of rapid-fire kind of questions, so it's yes or no. So, the first one is, yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CPS CEO? We can start with you, Danielle.
We'll start with me?
Yeah, and then we're going to go this way.
All right. Sure, yes.
Wait. Oh, we don't, we don't. Yeah, we're going to go, yeah, we're going to.
You did say rapid-fire.
What about you, Andre?
Yes.
And you?
Yes, we should keep Pedro.
Okay. Yes or no, do you support taking out a high-interest loan to cover operating costs? Jessica, we can start with you.
No, we should not take out a high-interest loan.
Andre?
I think that's insanity, no.
What about you?
No.
And you?
No.
Okay. So, now I can say why or why not for those questions? Okay, now you can answer it. Okay, you can go, because you had, you was about to have your answer.
Okay, okay. So, yes, because I've been in the school when a principal was walked out in the middle of the school year, and it's utter chaos. And, you know, the district follows, you know. We don't, we cannot afford any more chaos than we've already experienced this school year. And as far as the high-interest loan is concerned, I took out a payday loan before, and it's still on my credit right now. So, our great-grandkids will be paying for this because we don't have an immediate plan. And that is the thing that I am most fearful about, is that we don't have an immediate plan besides politics to pay for this loan.
Anusha?
Yeah, I mean, I think the chaos and the instability we're seeing right now is just unacceptable and our students deserve more. So, in terms of Mr. Martinez, I think that there's definitely room for improvement. There's more that I would like to see coming from CPS, but at this time, I don't see reason for him to be removed as CEO. And I think if, with the new board members appointed and hopefully with new elected members coming in, there can be more transparency and accountability in how these decisions are made. And as for a short-term loan, I've been vocally against a short-term loan to pay for any budget gap. The current budget gap is really unfortunate. We have kids without teachers in the classroom, and we have cuts to after-school programs, like the one that I volunteer and help run and as an after-school debate coach. And I'm not happy with the current budget situation. But the decision cannot be to pay for today's students' benefits and learning at the expense of tomorrow's students. So, that's why I'm strongly against a payday loan.
And Andre, you can go.
So, I'd like to applaud Mr. Martinez for holding the line and thinking about the taxpayers. Number one, we have a $9 billion budget. We have $5 billion come from the taxpayers, the property owners. And when we are in office, elected November the 5th, we're going to be walking into a $14 billion deficit, you know. And you're talking about taking another payday loan, so you're talking about adding to that, which all of that represents insanity. It's important that the board be independent from the mayor control and the mayor having any say-so or input. You cannot go along to intimidate or use your power of authority as the mayor to pressure a whole board to resign that has never took place in Chicago history, and it will stop November the 5th.
And Jessica, how do you feel about those two questions?
Yeah, I think it is critically important that we support and keep Pedro Martinez in his seat as CEO right now. It's very telling that 450 principals and administrators went out of their way to write and sign a letter in support of his leadership. This is also a time of great transition, and it's really important that we have stable leadership through any major district transition. So, I'm hearing a resounding call that he should stay for a number of reasons. In terms of a high-interest, short-term loan, we simply can't do that. We've tried this method in Chicago many times before, and it keeps landing us in a deeper and a deeper hole. We know better, we need to do better, and so, we cannot take out that loan.
Okay. So, we're going to stick with CPS leadership for the next question. And so, for this question is, one of the things the CPS board does is hire and evaluate a CEO. What qualities or experience would you like to see the CPS CEO have? Who want to go first? Because that was a big question, so who want to go first? Do you want to go? Okay.
I think the number-one goal for all folks in CPS, whether it's at the top or folks that are directly working with our kids as teachers and as teacher assistants, we need to have a focus on improving academic outcomes for our kids. So, that's a track record that I hope a CEO would have, is that being good in academic outcomes for our kids as the North Star. And how we get there, of course, you can have different paths. You can prioritize making sure that all kids have social workers at every school, special education case managers at every school, keeping our kids safe by having after-school programs, upgrading our building infrastructure so that our kids aren't breathing in mold and asbestos. All of those are ways to get there, and I hope that a CEO would also prioritize those paths, because it's not just about the end outcome, it's also about the process by which someone gets to having improved academic outcomes for our kids. So, I hope a track, a alignment and a vision of improved academic outcomes, and then a track record of investing in and prioritizing some of the things that I mentioned.
Andre, do you have an answer to that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, I was thinking that the qualifications of a CEO is like a business. And, you know, so the person should know how to balance a budget, you know, they should know about a budget. They should also be able to have the capabilities and the know-how to bring people together and work across the aisle, you know, to get your votes or to get the people approval. Then you have a great need of our students, the need of the students, the math, the reading level, and the graduation level. They showing up, but they're not being taught, you know. When they graduate, they're reading at an A-grade level, which is unacceptable. But then you also need a CEO that understands the pain and the need of the taxpayers, because you're spending their money. And every time someone run for office, they come up with an idea, but who's paying for it? The taxpayers. And we cannot afford to continue to raise property taxes and paying our way out of the debt and pushing people out of their homes.
Danielle, what about you?
I've been in so many leadership trainings in the last four years, and I will say that something I don't hear about a lot is the CEO's responsibility to support. A CEO is a figurehead, if you will, to all of the work that actually happens to get kids to where they need to be, right? And this entity up here is literally the thing that is support, that is supposed to support this work, right? And so, at the moment that we start to see teachers that don't have basic things that they need in the classroom, classrooms that don't function as classrooms, we know that that support is not working, right? And so, to be able to support that work, you got to know what that work is. You have to be intimately connected to the people who are doing that work and then those who are receiving, right? So, connectedness is a thing that I want to see in a CEO. And I see Pedro trying to do that, right, in his, in some of the connections that he's been able to make with our principals. But it, these two things aren't like so far, you know, across from each other. You can't be up here in CEO land and, you know, making all these budget decisions in a vacuum. That has to be intimately connected to the work that needs to happen. And so, it's not, like, a CEO of a school district is the, is the most unique in that it is so intimately connected to the outcomes of kids. So, it can't, it has to be hard work. It can't be office or desk work. And so, in a CEO, I want to see a person who can, one, connect with our kids, connect with our parents, connect with our, our staff, and then understand how these decisions up here make this work easier, and that's it.
Jessica, I think you're the last person to answer this one.
Yeah. I really see four key pillars of an effective CEO. The first is around having a track record of student success and strong student academic outcomes. The second is someone who has a track record of strong organizational leadership and organizational change and being able to manage change successfully in a large bureaucracy. Third, I think it's really important that our leader is a collaborative person, has demonstrated a desire and a recognition that they don't possess all of the answers on their own, but that they are able to build relationships across multiple constituencies to understand competing interests and be able to work and bring folks together. And the last piece that I think is really important, Chicago is a unique city with an important history, and I think it's important that our CEO has a deep knowledge base and experience in the history of our city and can anchor themselves in both our successes and our failures and be able to act in light of that history.
Okay, yeah. So, we've been talking about budget, but we got some more questions, of course. So, in the most recent budget, we're talking about FY 2025, Chicago Public Schools projected a $500 million deficit, oh, every year for the next five years. That deficit will be there every year for the next five years. And that's before any added costs related to teacher or principal union contracts that are being currently negotiated. How would you balance the budget that's nearly $10 billion? Sometimes when I see that number, it still shocks me. But yeah, yeah, we have a budget that's $10 billion. So, how would you, how would you manage that? Andre, since you're a finance manager, I'm going to go to you first.
I do believe that you said 500 million?
For the next, for the next five.
So, that's just 500 million, right? So, then you have a $3.2 billion emergency need to go in and just fix up the schools to make them safe for our kids. Then on top of that, you have $14 billion that they need to go through the schools to make them, to fix, fix everything. So, that's 17 billion, probably 18 billion, plus the 500 million that you talked about, on top of nine to almost $10 billion budget. You understand what I'm saying?
If that's correct.
No, that's correct.
If.
So, yes.
Go ahead.
No, $3.2 billion that they have to do for infrastructure. Then another $14 billion, that's just to make them safe. That's needed right now. So, when you talk about numbers like that, that's a lot of money on top of a $9.4 billion budget that we're faced with now. In 2018, we was faced with a $6.4 billion budget. So, 2018, $6 billion, 2024, $9.4 billion. So, there's a $3.5 billion increase. When our kids, I mean, we don't have the capacity or the students, the attendance that we used to have in 2018, but we have a bigger budget. So, the first thing that I would do as a finance manager, I need to know where the money's being spent. I would call for an independent audit so that we can look at every dollar and see where it's being spent.
Anusha, would you like to take on this question?
Yeah, I think that the current budget gap is brought on by decades of disinvestment in our schools, and the solution cannot be shortsighted like taking out a loan. We direly need funding for our schools, because just to illustrate some of the things that are being cut, things like after-school programs, like debate being cut $600,000, that's 80% of funding for a place that keeps kids safe, engaged after school, provides childcare for working families, those are the things that are being cut. There's discussion about all the vacancies in the school district right now being cut permanently. I've spoken to so many parents whose kids do not have permanent teachers in the classroom, and they will not have them if that's the budget situation that we're in. I think it's important for board members to know the difference between a necessity and a nice-to-have. And right now, a lot of our necessities are being cut. So, to close the gap, we need additional funding from Springfield and not shortsighted proposals, proposals like a short-term loan. And in my work as a Director of Citizen Action, Illinois, I have a lot of experience working with state legislature, working with the state legislature to pass bills. And one of the bills that we need to pass is equitable school funding for Chicago Public Schools. And that's why I'm proud to have the support of Illinois State Treasurer Mike Ferricks and 11 state legislators, because of my track record of advocating for working families. And I will prioritize, as my responsibility as a board member, to bring our kids the funding that they deserve to close the budget gap.
Jessica?
Yeah. I see really two main directions that we need to approach this issue from. The first is around making sure that the evidence-based funding formula, which is the way that we fund schools throughout the state of Illinois, was passed in 2017, that essentially says that school districts that have higher needs ought to have additional funds come into them. Currently, the state is funding that formula at a little less than 80%, which would reallocate an additional $1.4 billion in additional funds coming back into Chicago Public Schools each year. We need to work with our legislators and with the governor's office to make sure that the evidence-based funding formula is, in fact, fully funded, and those funds are coming into Chicago Public Schools. Now, that will not be enough to meet the year-over-year deficit that we're, that we're looking at and that we're faced with. So, we also need to take a look at ways in which our pension fund might be shared across the state. Chicago is the only district in the state that bears its entire pension burden on its own. And then I think that there are a series of hard conversations that we need to sit down and have with one another to figure out how we can make sure that we protect our schools and keep those spaces as sacred for our students, but look at perhaps efficiencies in central office bureaucracy. I certainly support calling for an independent audit so that we can take a hard look at where our funds are going and what the return on investment of all funds across the district is.
Okay. Danielle, you're the last one.
Sure. So, I'm a nonprofit leader, and in nonprofit, one of the first things they taught me about budgeting and finances is that you have to have multiple streams of income, because this is hard work. Taking care of kids is not raising money. The kids ain't got none. And so, what you have to do is get creative about getting money from businesses, and this is the same thing that I will propose for our schools. Grant money, there's $1.3 billion of grant money that we don't even get right now from the federal government. And I won't go into that. We, we don't take advantage of our fundraising opportunities just in the, in a city full of people where the median income in parts of our city is $120,000. And we don't take advantage, obviously, of the full funding of the state. And so, we'll have to pursue and get really serious about pursuing all of these different diversified ways of funding our schools. And I had proposed a Chicago Public Schools marathon. The Bank of America marathon made $523 million last year. $523 million. We can make that year-over-year for the, the kids of Chicago. I don't know a soul who wouldn't participate in the Chicago Public School marathon. It could also serve as a way for us to build culture that we so desperately need in our, in our district. So, we have ways to raise the money, and the money is present. I won't operate from a deficit mindset. The money's there. We just have to be the ones that usher in a new way of thinking about fundraising.
We're running a little bit behind, so again, we're going to go back to like some rapid-fire questions.
Yes.
So, please, think we yes or no. Do you think the city should pick up part of, of the cost of non-teaching pensions as it has since 2020? That's the $175 million pension payment. Let's start with you.
Yes, the city should pick that up.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, again, yes or no. Do you think the state should provide CPS more funding?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay. I think you all had, had, you know, answered this question about how you would work with the state and other elected officials, but if you have anything else to add to that, you can mention that here. But if not, we can move on to the next question.
I'd like to say why I said no.
Okay.
Well, the governor, J.B. Prisker, said that he have gave Chicago enough money, he can't give anymore. And I agree with him. You know, you can't keep giving money when people are misspending money, and you don't, you can't have, you're not accountable for the money that you're being spent. Nobody can say, "Well, the $9.4 billion, and why we finna be into a $19 billion or $18 billion deficit?" So, I agree with the governor. Until we can fix our house, we should not receive any money, any extra money to continue business as usual.
Interesting. Okay, so, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's totally fine.
Now, I got to do, now we're going to talk about school choice. First question is a yes or no. Do you believe any of Chicago Public Schools admissions policy should, should change?
Say the question one more time.
Sorry. Do you believe any of Chicago Public Schools admissions policies should change?
Oh, yeah.
So, yes?
Yes.
What about you?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, if yes, what would you like to see change? Oh, I'm going to start with you, Jessica.
Absolutely. Currently, the process for families to figure out how to apply and make decisions within our magnet and selective enrollment system is overwhelming, to say the least. So, that is a policy that I would like to see amended. I think that there is a more straightforward and streamlined way that families could choose to apply to be a part of the magnet and selective enrollment system and then be matched through a lottery. We've started to make some of those changes at the high school level. I would like to see those changes be made and available for all families.
Danielle, I believe you said yes. So, what would you like to see change?
I would, I would love to see us match students to, and let me not veer off, but I have seen, I have heard from kids who have interests, and there are schools that match their interests. And I, I would like to see us score those needs as a way to match students to, to schools that will benefit them, instead of just like, you know, "You go here, you go here" kind of thing.
What about you, Anusha?
I think we have to like zoom back from this problem of, you know, it's difficult for students to get into selective enrollment schools, there's so much demand, the process is so complicated, and the current demographics are not as equitable as they used to be. But the real challenge is that why is it that not every child has access to a high-quality school in their own neighborhood? And that so many families feel like it's either I get into a selective enrollment school, my child gets into a selective enrollment school, or they don't have access to a good education. I think that's the main problem that we should be focusing on first. And then, of course, the challenges that we see now is that not every child that deserves a great education has access to that, because unfortunately, in many parts of our city, it is either you get into a selective enrollment or a magnet program, or you go to your under-resourced neighborhood school. So, that's a problem that I'll work to address.
Andre, you said yes, too, so.
Well, we have to take the politics out of our education system. Every kid and every parent has the right to choose the best education for their children, whether it's across the street, whether it's a mile away, you know, and all of these schools, whether it's charter school, public school, private school, need to have equitable funding.
Okay. So, the next question is, the Chicago Board of Education has taken steps in the past to end charter school contracts when schools are not performing well or have financial troubles. This most recently happened with Urban Prep, though a legal fight ensued. Are you in favor of ending charter school agreements, which effectively leads to school closure? I'm going to start with you, Anusha.
I don't support any school closures, but what I do support is accountability and transparency. And that's what I would demand from every school, including charter schools.
What about you, Jessica?
I don't support school closures. I think in the case of underperforming charters, there needs to be a remediation plan put in place, and that the, the school community needs to be worked with to support them in every way possible before we would consider any other action.
Andre, what do you think about this question?
Well, I don't support school closure, as I fought in 2013 when they closed the 50 schools. And my son go to Urban Prep, so, and I fought with Urban Prep when CPS tried to close Urban Prep, because they took out a loan, you know, and if all of their, their children graduated, and most of them going, 90% of them go to college. So, it's funny that they wanted to close Urban Prep because of that, but now they're demanding that the CEO take out a loan. So, no, I would fight against any school closing.
Danielle?
Yeah, I don't agree with school closures, and even when a school runs into trouble, it's a school. Running a school is hard, and so, they need support, just like our school system, our school district is, is in need of a lot of support, intense support. I believe in giving that support to charter schools, especially when they've been able to amass thousands of students in a building across their networks. They, they definitely need our support.
Okay. These are my favorite set of questions. This is about equity now. And something I've been reporting on recently is the uptick in English language learners. And we have students who are English language learners who are going to schools or paired with schools that do not have bilingual teachers or staff. As a board member, how would you ensure English learners have support and resources in school? Jessica?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that. You know, we have an influx of English language learners now, and so, I'm thinking about this from both a short-term and a long-term perspective. In the short term, we need to reduce any unnecessary bureaucracy in the pathway to achieve certification, and even in the short term, if there are possibilities for teachers to test in to some of those.
And even in the short term, if there are possibilities for teachers to test into some of those bilingual roles or to achieve a temporary certification while they pursue a longer-term bilingual certification. I'd also like to see us, as a district, pay for and support the coursework for teachers to obtain their bilingual certification and certainly streamline that process as much as possible.
Andre?
Well, I love Jessica's answers, especially since she's been the principal. Yeah, but again, not only should our children have the best of education, that our teachers also need to support, you know, to have, you know, not being able to share books with the kids and pencils and pens, you know. And, you know, as far as bilingual, you know, speaking Spanish and other different things. We should have all of that, and I don't see why we're not. So, I believe that things will change November 5th. That's why it's so important, again, for the board to be independent from the mayor.
Danielle, how would you, how would you work on this issue?
I'm just so ready for you to say Anusha.
I was like, yeah, time to jump.
Okay. So, you will hear me say this a few times, partnerships. We have really great resources in our communities, our consulate, our consulates, our partners, especially when we have languages that have more nuance than some of the classes that we've offered. And we have our community organizations like Latino councils, those types of things that offer these services and there's nobody in them. And so, if we use these partnerships in our buildings, then I believe that we, one, could reach them right now because they already have the infrastructure to do this work. And then, two, they could be a long-term partnership as our teachers are incoming. We have students graduating that are coming into teach first year, next year. And so, you know, if we set that infrastructure in place now to have those supports without trying to burden our teachers with more work, then I definitely support, you know, using our partnerships for that, for that cause.
Now, Anusha.
I love this question because my parents are immigrants to this country from India. And also, when I was a classroom teacher, I was at a dual-language immersion school. So, I was a bilingual math teacher. And right now, I volunteer as a debate coach, but the program is Tabata en Espanol. So, it's taught in Spanish and it has a mix of students whose native language is Spanish and they just want to get better at using it, and students who only speak Spanish who are new arrivals to our community. And again, that's a program that I mentioned is getting these immense cuts because of our budget situation. When we talk about language access and language programs at our schools, it's not just for kids that need that, need that as they don't speak English. But we have to look at the opportunities that expanding dual-language immersion programs provides for all kids, even who speak English but whose families want them to learn another language and thinking about how it prepares them for the job market. So, I strongly support expanding dual-language immersion programs like the one that I taught in. And I think it provides a lot of opportunities for our kids who are new to our community and also for kids whose native language is English.
So, this is, this is another question I've been reporting on for a while. So, students with disabilities have been struggling to get access to transportation for the last few years. As you all have seen, there has been struggles to get bus routes. Bus routes have been very long, yada, yada, all that stuff. As a board member, what would you do to ensure that these students are legally entitled to have bus services in their individualized education programs? What would you do to ensure that they get bus service quickly? Andre, I'm gonna go with you first.
Okay. I think you like my name. Well, it's sad when you say that, that not only a parent has to worry about taking care of the needs of their child, but then they have to worry about and be concerned about a bus pulling up, giving them the proper service that they deserve, that their taxpayers pay for, you know. So, as a board member, I would love to sit down and meet with some of those parents so I can personally have the experience and the knowledge, you know, because that is unacceptable. You know, there's no way that you should have that burden on that parent, especially when we have almost $10 billion budget to satisfy that need.
Jessica, what do you think about this question?
Yeah, I think this is a critically important question. And I'm actually proud to be endorsed by CPS Parents for Buses that has put together an array of thoughtful and creative options to support students in this transportation crisis. I think it's really important that we sit down with groups like CPS Parents for Buses and see which of those solutions we might be able to implement. Also, fundamentally, this is a staffing issue. We don't have the number of bus drivers that we need. And so, we need to offer certification for commercial driver's licensure in both English and Spanish. We need to pay for the coursework and for the actual test to support more folks in achieving that licensure. We also need to make it as attractive as possible for bus drivers to want to choose to work in Chicago Public Schools. So, whether that be through a signing bonus, certainly making sure our salaries are competitive. But we also need to increase the total number of bus drivers available.
Danielle?
Sure. We have like, I think at last count, maybe 123 charter bus companies in Chicago. And none of them have an investment in our Chicago Public Schools. Maybe because we haven't asked, maybe because we haven't been aggressive enough in our ass. But those are bus companies that hold billions of dollars in assets of buses with drivers already. They're driving out there right now. And if we need an immediate response to this bus shortage, I'm gonna say, why don't we use the buses that are on the roads right now and contract with them? Make agreements with them. They want to be able to say that they invested in Chicago Public Schools in a meaningful way. We need buses. Let's ask.
One of the stories I think about, you know, I'm going door-to-door, I hear from a lot of people. And when it comes to special education students and busing, I think about this mom who lives in Englewood and her neighborhood school is literally across the street from her. And she has two sons, one who has a disability, and he was not getting the support that he needed at her neighborhood school. So, she was waking up at the beginning of the school year at 5:30 to take the red line with her two kids so that they could get dropped off at school on the north side. And even after her son that has disabilities was able to get the busing once it started, her other son was not able to get the sibling busing guaranteed that's supposed to be guaranteed by CPS. So, she was still getting up at 5:30 every morning, taking the red line to get her kids to school. And of course, we need to prioritize funding. We need to prioritize making sure that our kids can get to school safely, especially students with disabilities. We also need to zoom out and look at the problem. Why is it that this mom could not send her kid to the school right across the street and get a great education for her sons? That's a problem I also want to address.
This is, this is, this is a pretty big topic in Chicago Public Schools as well, but we're kind of, we're running a little bit short on time, so hopefully, everybody can answer in 30 seconds, okay? Chicago is facing staffing shortages across the district. What policies do you support to recruit more teachers, including teachers of color? I specifically think about men of color as teachers and educators in the hard-to-staff field such as special education.
I'm happy to start. And actually, this is a big part of my platform. We need strong staffing pipelines and leadership development pathways in our district. Right now, with the Southwest Organizing Project, we lead a program called the Parent Mentor Program and also the Ladders of Opportunity Program, which supports parents in achieving their certification and licensure to become paraprofessionals in the communities where they send their children to school. Those are programs that we need to expand because those are pathways into not only paraprofessional roles, but over time into increased teaching and staff roles and our folks in our neighborhoods and in our communities that are taking on those positions. I fully support a strong career ladder model to retain some of our strongest talent and make sure that we are paying our really excellent teachers and finding diverse roles so that they can share their experience and their expertise across the school. Research also shows that that helps to maintain people in their school buildings. So, I support a range of career ladder solutions to address the challenge.
Okay. Danielle? Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna do it.
Thanks, Samantha. So, love Parent Mentor Program. When it first started, I helped facilitate bringing that program to Bass. I'm so proud of it. And I support them in expanding that program. Once they put that program into Englewood STEM, we saw, you know, some of those other factors in the schools start to be impacted as well, like school culture. School culture is impacted when we have people from our communities go into our buildings. So, I support expanding that Parent Mentor Program. And I also, I also support our city colleges are doing a really great job of offering options for our students to, you know, these pathways into schools. They are offering tape testing. They're offering the certifications that our young people need. And one of the things that the organizations that are really doing this work has seen is that our adults aren't ready to take these tests. So, we need to expand the programs that help our adults learn how to read and be able to pass these types of tests.
Andre?
So, when you look at staffing, recruiting, you know, let's look at it for what it is. You have teachers that's fighting and coming to work, not knowing if they're gonna have a contract, not knowing if they're gonna have a pension, not having nurses, you know, in the school, air in the school, things like that, the right supplies. When a person loved their job, they're gonna show up. When they're getting good benefits, they're gonna show up. When they have a security job, far as their pension, you know, their contract, and they don't have to worry about that, it's gonna be attractive to other people. So, I think that we have to look at that and make sure that our teachers have the best jobs, have the best salaries, and have good healthcare. And in closing, you gotta look at it like this. Nobody wants to come to work not knowing what's gonna happen tomorrow. So, we need to make sure that they are protected.
Anusha?
Yeah, the situation is really dire right now. There's about 1,200 vacancies across the district. And last week, I stood with teachers at Malleson Elementary, which is in the third, or the sixth district, has an over 30% vacancy rate. You know, I taught middle school math. I taught two grades at a time. And there is a teacher teaching fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math there. So, we have a really horrible situation right now that needs to be urgently addressed. I strongly support programs like Grow Your Own because what better way to invest in the future of our, of our city and our education system than in our own students? At the same time, it's hard to tell our students, hey, you should consider a career in teaching and education when they look at what's going on right now in their own classrooms and the burnout and the stress levels that teachers are facing and the vilifying sometimes of teachers in our own city. So, I think it's really important to invest in programs like Parent Mentor Program, Grow Your Own. But at the same time, we need to address some of the barriers to entering the teaching profession. And like you said, it's important because when students have teachers that look like them and even from their own community, that pays out tenfold in investment in terms of their academic and educational outcomes.
Now, we're going into facilities and infrastructure. The district has seen modest enrollment increases in the last couple of years. But the overall number of students remains dramatically lower than it was a decade ago. And some schools serve a fraction of the students they once did, making it hard to provide a full slate of programs and support. All of you said no to this in our questionnaire, but how should you, how should CPS balance its current enrollment with the hundreds of buildings CPS operates? Andre, I believe you kind of got to this when you were talking about, I think, capital spending. So, I think you should answer this question first.
Well, across the street from me is a school that's closed, Bessie Ross. About four blocks from me is a school, Douglas, that has, I believe, maybe 30, 35 people, students in it. When we elected, or one of us is elected and the new board is elected, we're gonna be faced with a big deficit. We're gonna be faced with looking at, you know, 35, how is that operating, you know, expense? You know, let's use Douglas, that has 35 kids in a big building like that. You got heat, you got janitors, you got teachers, you got to over, you got to over-expense, you know. So, you gotta look at all of that. And there's gonna be some hard decisions that has to be made, you know. But the thing about it is that you gotta give the kids, you know, and represent the taxpayers their money because you overseeing their $5 billion, you know. And I'm tired, as a homeowner, I'm sick and tired of every time someone elected, they come up with a great idea to them, but somebody has to pay for it and it's always the property owners. So, those are the things that we need to look at.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. I meant to say you all said no to school closings on our questionnaire. So, with this issue of lower enrollment, schools with larger spaces, how should CPS balance its current enrollment with the hundreds of school buildings that it currently operates? Anusha, I'm gonna start. Go with you.
Yeah, so, with the transition from student-based budgeting to needs-based budgeting, we have a floor at all of our schools now. And so, that hopefully should attract more families to send their kids to their neighborhood schools because before, if you didn't have the funding because of low enrollment, to have adequate teachers, to have sort of justice coordinators, to have special education case managers and nurses and counselors, now your school might have that and that might be enough to draw parents back and students back to our public schools. And that's the vision, and I'm optimistic that that can happen. At the same time, there is, you know, a budget shortfall and I think we need to be considering co-location opportunities that also meet other societal needs, like childcare centers, school-based health centers that can help draw additional revenue for our schools, still meet some of our student and family needs. I mean, Chicago is a childcare desert. A lot of people don't have options when it comes to high-quality childcare. And you can see some of those opportunity gaps when kids enter pre-K about the quality of childcare that they receive beforehand. So, I think having options for childcare centers and school-based health centers will help increase utilization of spaces without needing school closures.
Danielle?
Yeah. So, I definitely agree with, you know, creating spaces in schools for some of those resources that we already need anyway, kids need. There needs to be childcare in a school. That's like, kind of like a no-brainer to me. But some of those resources that parents need, what if we had places in our buildings where parents could actually be? And currently, we have our parent universities and they only operate in like, I think it's like eight schools. We could, we could definitely expand that. But also, like, if you think about your own house and the rooms that you'd like to have available for you and your kids, you don't want kids stuffed in every corner of your home. You want to have space in your house for resources that are going to make this experience at home more enjoyable and support the needs of the family that's there. And that's what our school communities are. There are families there. When you go into that building, that becomes your family. And so, families operating in these buildings that have to literally vie for space, that creates this contentious environment in the building where you have social workers looking at teachers sideways because they have to operate in the hallway. And so, where a building is supposedly underutilized, where they say a building is supposed to have 900 kids in it, and I'm talking to an administrator saying, you know, where is your social work happening? Where is, where are your speech pathologists being housed? And they're like, shucks, they come in the hallway right now, even when the, we only have 500 kids in the building. And so, I think that, one, we need to audit the way that we look at utilization in our buildings. But, two, we need to be very intentional about the communities that we are building inside of our buildings.
What about you, Jessica?
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the vast majority of our, our school buildings that are under-enrolled are on the south and west sides. And those are also places in our city that are, have a lack of resources available to them. So, I also support looking at opportunities for co-locations, but thoughtfully working with and being in conversation with school communities about what those resources should be, whether they be a community health center, whether they be a community space. Those are potential opportunities to bring in partners that could pay rent, that would offer important programming, not only for families in the school, but for surrounding community as well.
Okay. So, now this question I'm gonna ask is gonna bring us back to students. Chronic absenteeism is up across Chicago Public Schools. It's up across the state, meaning that students are showing up or not showing up to class for about 10% of the school year. So, they might miss about 18 to 20 days of school with or without a valid excuse for absence, right? What are some initiatives you would support to help get students back into the classroom?
I can start.
Yeah. I didn't want to call you again, but I was like, yeah, go ahead.
You're picking on me, Samantha. No, I'm just kidding. So, one of those things I support is expanding the number of mental health days that our kids get. Our kids are dealing with a society that we, we didn't plan for. We, we don't even fully understand or grasp the stressors that they are managing through, the traumas that they are managing through, and I believe that they need some grace for that. And, and two, I was the head of the- And, and two, I was the head of the, the attendance team when I was the clerk, right? So it was attendance was, I owned attendance. So I, I take this kind of topic very seriously. We, well, I, I do support, you know, our staff members being in conversation and in community with the families and, and understanding why, what the barriers are for our kids coming to school. Going to their homes, walking them to school, all of those things just became an additional burden on our community, on our school community. I believe that we should be using our partnerships that already have relationships with these families that can bus our kids, or, you know, if they have resources, then we can use those resources instead of taking our teachers out the building, which we ended up doing, our deans, our culture staff, getting kids in the morning. That just became problematic. I think that over, by and large, there are some barriers. And if we just be, and we are in better communication, we have set up a mechanism for communications with our schools and our community partners, we can have a better handle on getting our babies to school.
Andre.
All right, so I, I think it looked different. As you were asking that question, I thought about when I was in high school. There was this teacher named Dr. Hamilton, who passed not too long ago, that out of all the classes that I went to, I loved going to his class. I loved going to his class because he was a teacher that cared about his students, you know, whether you was in his class or not. And he, and he, and he was like a father to you that you didn't have. So when you look at our children, they're coming from maybe a broken home or a, a house that may be in a situation. They leaving there, they gotta cross game lines to get to school, you know. So they may have, they might have had breakfast, they might not, you know. So when they get to school, now you got a teacher that worrying about, how's she gonna pay her bills? She don't have the right supplies? Is, is her contract, do she gotta go on strike? You know, and then she gotta fight for a pension. So we need to free all that up. You know, we need to make sure that our teachers, our educators are secure, that they have a good, healthful environment to work in. We gotta make sure that the teaching is exciting and safe space for our children so that they would love to come. Once you do those things, then it's like, you know, it's like word of mouth. Man, Ms. Jones, man, I went to her class, you know, everything was well. You know, people start coming. But nobody want to be in a hostile environment.
Anusha, how would you approach this issue?
Sometimes there are factors outside of a child's control that affect whether or not they come to school, whether or not they come to school on time. But there are a lot of factors within a child's control. And we have to ask, you know, what is it that makes a kid excited to come to school? And, you know, I think about when I was teaching, I had a kid who started coming late every day, and he would say, my sister, you know, she wakes up so late, she has to drop me here and then go to her school. And I said, well, you know, if you keep being late, then you're not gonna be able to come on the field trip that we have in a couple of months. That was the last time he was late. And whether it's a field trip or some other kind of incentive, you know, in my experience, it was after-school programs. If you don't show up on the dot in the morning, then you're not gonna be able to participate in the things after school that you like, whether it's sports, music, or art. That gives kids a reason to wake up and be excited. I wish that reason were math, you know, I taught math. But to be honest, sometimes it's not academic parts of kids' day, it's what comes after school. And right now, those programs are being cut. I spoke to a family this weekend, and the grandmother said, you know, my son has been begging for a football program at his grade level. And they don't have that for him. But he keeps asking me, you know, can you ask if they can do football? Can you ask if they can do football? And imagine if we had these high-quality extracurricular after-school programs for kids during the school year and throughout the summer that we could use as an incentive. That would really reduce absenteeism because it would make our kids excited to come to school.
Jessica.
I see the issue of truancy and absenteeism as, as a very layered problem that needs a very layered solution. First and foremost, we need, we do need to support our schools in making sure that they are positive, joyful, relational spaces where every child wants to be, where every child who walks in the door knows that they have an adult that they're going to connect with and that they are eager to come and see that person and their peers each day. That's one piece. I also think community partnerships and the ways that we work with our community partners to support students in coming to school. Kofi used to facilitate a walking school bus, which actually was employment for parents in the neighborhood to pick and walk students to school for pre-K programs. I certainly would like to take a look at that across the board. But then also, also, you know, we talked about this transportation issue that is an issue. And so if, if we can't provide adequate transportation for students, I mean, that's incumbent on us as a system to figure out, to support some of the ongoing absentee and truancy issues.
So our last question for today, I promise, is, is there a teacher or a staff member from school that you still remember today and why? Andre. Cause you started smiling.
No, you didn't mean to call me. Well, as I stated before, in high school, this teacher named Dr. Hamilton. Not only did I, you know, fall in love with him and his teaching skills, but I believe 70% of the students that went to DeSable. You know, he was an amazing teacher. And, you know, it's time to, you know, have teachers that care again. You know, that can be a second parent. And when my son went to Urban Prep, I had no problem whatsoever for him assuming a feeling like one of them was his adopted or stepdad. You know, I didn't have an issue with that. Because I learnt, and I seen my son become the top of the class in Urban Prep. And if that what gets my son to that top of the class, hey, I'm with it, I'm for it, and we need to bring it back in every school.
Anusha.
I'm having a hard time thinking of just one. I've had the privilege of working with a lot of my teachers even in recent years around different advocacy issues at the state level. And I'm proud to have many of them supporting me on this campaign, making phone calls and knocking doors to help me get elected. But to think about one teacher that really made a difference in my life, Mr. Rubares was my fourth-grade teacher. And he was the first one that said, you know, maybe Anusha shouldn't be so bored in school and just sorting papers in the back of the classroom. You know, maybe we should find more ways to challenge her and, you know, get her the academic challenges that she needs. Because before that, I was in a regular classroom setting, and he really advocated for me to be put into a gifted program after that year.
Jessica.
Yeah, Dr. Dan Valancourt is, is the one that comes to mind because that was the first space in time I remember feeling fully seen as a student. I remember him making me feel smart and making me feel capable. And that's a moment that I will never go backwards from, so.
Danielle.
Okay. So I really want to shout out a school community, if I could. Obusby Elementary School is on 77th and, 70, yeah, 77th and Green. And Dr. Lily White, God rest her soul, she was the principal who advocated for our culture. Our, we had a completely black teacher staff. And our, man, it, it, there's no recreating the community, the family, the village that she was able to establish there without understanding the importance of village. And every teacher that I encountered in that building poured into me in a way that just made all of these other life challenges that I encounter, you know, bearable, if you will. So Mr. Sweat, Ms. Hester, Mr. Haskins was on my board when I first started Kingdom Avenue. That was my teacher in seventh grade. Just like those, those, having that kind of identity in elementary school really grounded me as a person. And so that school community, I'm forever grateful for.
Well, thank you all for joining us. Thank you to Jessica Biggs, Andre Smith, Anusha Thaddeora, and Danielle Wallace. We appreciate you taking the time to be here, cause I know it's busy. And thank you for tuning in to Chalkbeat's inaugural school board candidate forum to learn more about the people running in Chicago's historic school board elections. You can find our voter guides and additional resources at chalkbeat.org/Chicago. Thank you again to our partners at Block Club Chicago, WBEZ, and the Chicago Sun-Times for working with us to develop the voter guides. Special thanks to Tiona Van Gundy at Field Events for planning and hosting these forums, and to BMP Film for video and audio production. And thanks to our engagement team at Chalkbeat, my colleagues at the, at Chalkbeat Chicago, and our managing editors, Eric Gorski, Carrie Malago, and our editor-in-chief, Sarah Darville. For Chalkbeat Chicago, I'm Samantha Smiley. Have a great day and happy voting.